For the order of business, we had new appointees to explore in the new district file. Where you want me to do this?
Mike, say your name.
Hi, Gerald Thurman.
Senator, please read it. You silently swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully discharge the group of the Office of Chaboggin County Border Commissioners, District Number Five, and for the county of Chaboggin, and State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
I do it. Thank you. I started my third list that Sunday's do a rat.
Hey, per timing of business, the development standard for the team, oh, planning on developing, it's been coming a while, Michael.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Zoning ordinance number one eighty-two rules, uh, the culmination of, uh, great deal of work on the part of the planning commission, of the course of the last episode, so, um, as you likely know, this is a comparatively extensive ordinance amendment with fair bit of detail. So I'm going to sort of go over the broad brush of this year's, so we can be rushed to this, but, um, as many of you know, um, there's been widespread interest over the last approximately ten years, you know, like the issue of the county, but issue why, you know, a tiny home living, whether it be retirees looking to downsize, or young people looking to live with a small upper parent, if you will, if there has been a lot of interest in that. Here in Chaboggin County, we do get regular aid quarters with respect to tiny homes, and I say, I know it's not like every day, but, um, particularly when spring rolls on, um, you get no one more resources to what people, uh, need to do with anything to establish a tiny home for the former dwellers in Portus. So this is an effort to, of course, codify the sales from the use of tiny homes. However, it'd be as part of, uh, maybe part of a tiny home planning development, some of you might be familiar with it, I think, PD development. Uh, I mean, the benefits of planning development are using inherent flexibility, sort of baked in to the process in terms of site design, setbacks, uh, building height in some cases, um, so this is sort of a first step to a possible, um, ordinance amendment that perhaps down the road would allow for, um, standalone tiny home permits, um, just like anyone with a two-year-old piece or anything else that goes with it. So right now, zoning ordinance has a minimum seven hundred square foot floor area standard. In the planning unit development, the floor area standard obviously is reduced. Um, the minimum floor area standard that was established by planning commission after a lot of deliberations, four hundred fifty square feet. We do have in the ordinance, uh, provision for guest homes. Guest homes, um, have to be, um, at least six hundred square feet. So these numbers up on the screen acknowledge that floor area standards for guest homes. So the ordinance, like we noted, there are useless hit definitions, uh, that will be injected into the zoning ordinance and, of course, a new R T ninety-eight, which would establish requirements and development standards to build or acquire these. Uh, but we're here, you're quite, I see, through the, uh, full area standard, it'd be reviewed by planning commission. So at the end of the day, where are these being committed? Uh, the Ag Force zoning districts and a certain monthly stream protections in the districts. Because some of you might know, um, those are our two most problems in our districts in the county. I stance that these, you know, allow these certainly in Ag Force districts, getting how extensive, uh, that zone district is. And just for the record, um, we're going to be some education to some folks, um, you know, a lot of people feel or think rather that if there is a home on a property, then some residential, I don't think they think this, the difference between using zoning. The zoning ordinance does allow, um, dwelling units in all of our zoning districts. So with that, um, I'd like to acknowledge the master plan. Um, now, the master plan does have a housing element. And one of the goals of the adopted master plan, read as follows, to ensure diversity of potential activity, more importantly, more relevant to this, um, diversity of residential living options. And one of your objectives tied to that goal is to ensure affordable, accessible, you know, living opportunities. So this ordinance would help fulfill that goal and objective in the master plan. So I'm going to run through, uh, some of the design standards or the development standards rather that are better than the ordinance. So, uh, the minimum site area would be three acres, three contiguous acres that is, and that would be buildable in the area, not just, uh, necessarily three acres, because we have to account for infrastructure, wells, suburbs, the internal roadways, driveways, and so on. As far as housing density, um, the minimum would be one home per quarter acre, which is just under one thousand square feet. Uh, as I mentioned, the minimum floor area would be four hundred fifty square feet. Um, it'd be no fewer than three dwellings permitted in a G H P V. And there is a fifty-foot minimum perimeter setback. And when I say perimeter, it would be the perimeter of the development, not the individual lots within said development. Um, and the last bullet point is rather important, uh, there is a provision in there that prohibits tiny home P V's or the new homes contained there from being used for short-term vacation purposes. That was a big concern by, um, some of our, from some of our planning issues. I want to reiterate that this amendment, number one eighty-two, did not permit individual tiny homes on individual lots outside of these planning developments. So tiny homes would only be allowed as a standalone residential dwelling within a tiny home planning development. As I mentioned earlier, um, this amendment might be considered a springboard to be possible. Um, and then that would allow standalone tiny homes, but that's another discussion, we have real, very expensive ones for that. As far as the Michigan residential code is concerned, uh, it's, it's not really concerned with, um, overall floor area, however, I mean, it's, we're concerned, um, if you can use that term, is that the residents have a close for, um, checklist of items, one habitable room that's a few something square feet, unless they have a cooking area, kitchen, uh, sanitation facility, with a bathroom, and washer and dryer hookups. All right, so the next three slides just, um, serve to illustrate, um, how this should play out on a three-acre parcel, five-acre parcel, and ten-acre parcel. Now granted, these graphics show a perfectly square parcel with no drinking strains or waterways. So, you know, for simplicity's sake, we try to just present this as, you know, a raw piece of square or either like ten-year copy or any of those features. So the green area of the perimeter of that square would be the fifty-foot perimeter setback. And the reason that was adopted was to, um, help preserve property values for, uh, property owners that be, uh, adjacent to, um, the tiny home planning development. That area, the fifty-foot setback area, maybe use open space for, um, exclusive use of the residents. Uh, so you can see, on a three-acre site, you're not going to get very many home, because it's comparatively small site. And when you consider a factor in infrastructure requiring instead greatly reduces the buildable area. So, um, it does allow, though, of course, a developer wants to visit her feedback. So, um, if they have a small parcel or they want to buy a small parcel, pursue this type of development. This would allow them to do so, albeit, uh, of course, a small scale. This is a five-acre parcel, obviously, you need to get more units. And then finally, a ten-acre parcel, uh, you know, it's, basically, I think, the larger the property, the more units one is going to get. So this is similar to what many of you are familiar with in terms of, well, it's actually something that you could allow homes that are smaller than their seven hundred square foot area standard is kind of adopted. So I think that should be it, to answer any questions, um, that be like. And I change, and I, I just want to add that in the public hearing on this matter, um, we, uh, we have junior, junior, we have con, I said, and the ordinance is definitely better by a little bit, I'll say, but those, that blind, but I'm, I'm.
Important question. Yeah, good point. What's the, um, definition of short-term rental?
Uh, I don't know my ordinance, uh, thing, but I can, I can give you a comparative. Um, it would be, uh, a dwelling that is rented for a period of thirty days or fewer. Um, the only other requirement, there are two requirements, both embedded in the definition. The second requirement is that the owner of the short-term rental cannot be, um, in or living or staying in the short-term rental while it's P E decided. So it's unlike a, 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 a bed breakfast, where, you know, bed breakfasts oftentimes at the party, or he's, he's living here. That's the difference. That's the, isn't it, she, she, the bed breakfast, achieve the short-term rental and say, a bed breakfast. But we don't, at the county level, we don't have, um, very many requirements for short-term rentals. In fact, the only requirements they allow in all those only districts, the only requirements are the two of a just now, two of, again, on better, yeah, definition.
Yeah, so, I guess I was confused, because I, I see this for a push requirement, and then I see a discussion about having a seven hundred nineteen. I lost, is that, is that, or, or, or we going with the five ninety-nine?
Four hundred fifty square feet to, um, five ninety-nine.
So the discussion about less than seven twenty, that's, that was.
There was a discussion about that, but we, we, we ended up at the end of the race, it didn't look like it.
Okay, okay, it seems that are chatted twice, and I didn't know.
Well, it's, it's, it's four fifty to five ninety-nine.
Like, like, you see, you see anything going on with the joint well, the joint substance, or the cemetery, or eastern hall units?
Well, there's certainly, you know, possibility for that, I didn't speak, I saw, it's the district floor and, and, um, you know, there's, there are some options, given, uh, the size of these units, it's just the size of these units for, sort of, pretty really way to, uh, treat wastewater, but, um, as it stands currently, it's based on the number of bedrooms. Um, these aren't participating in more than one, maybe two small bedrooms. So, you know, we didn't get into a very deep discussion about, uh, say, alternative setback options, but they are, they are according to file a cover at district floor on it, and so you didn't see any problem with the ordinance, certainly. Again, with side of the chest. Mr. Chairman, but may, so it, it passes if this, we call ourselves, I know it's, we're getting from the marketing, you know, we call ourselves tiny home company, that's probably. At this juncture, yes and no. Yes, and then if you adopt a command of what he needs to, he'd introduce the housing option, but within a unified development, like a residential subdivision. To be completely welcoming of tiny homes, we would allow them to stand alone, permanent dwellings on single lots. And you currently do not allow them. So.
You see that coming.
Well, that's up to you, um, the planning commission, if that's something you want us to look at. Um, certainly can be just that, we have discussed that periodically over the last few years, um, but not in doubt, we can be able to focus on this. But there is some appetite on the part of some of the planning committee, just that, you know, how that's, maybe not across the board, uh, but in certain zoning districts and perhaps, I mean, certain lot sizes.
You see any staying on regos, or you see no, huh, money on?
In this ordinance, they have to be foundation. You didn't want to get in a situation, you know, by any hell, to hardly parts. So, admittedly, that's going to increase the cost of these. Um, but at the end of the day, we could see that comparatively speaking, it's still be less expensive housing option. They go officially, they see this type of limit. But a lot of them make sure that they represented essentially what we see now in terms of, sort of, family dwellings or foundation.
Are they small, and they sense this?
Right.
It's maybe more than P E, huh?
Yeah, would be, would be, depending. We do have interest on the part of several, uh, area developers, um, pursuing P E D. I mean, we used to say, I must just speak on it, I thought, or we could have one or two people, uh, mention support for the ordinance. Well, we do have some interest, whether they come to fruition, we'll see, right?
More degrees, uh, to be on the red.
Yep, absolutely.
And then figure some one, three, four, should be.
But you say that there's developers, uh, on a large scale or? Well, um, not on a large scale, not like a whole B scale, for example. Small local builders slash developers, um, that express interest, um, you know, no, no one nature to lie, and he says it, yes. As I understand it, there, in the financial world, there is still some uncertainty, there's the others that lenders watch, and the mortgage dealers. Some financial institutions are, that express a concern about that, others not so much, but I think that's not my world.
Anything else at this point, with the chairman? Is this in any way in conflict with the screen protection moving in the R A M, please?
Well, that's a good question.
What's mandated by the state as well?
Um, well, well, planning commission ultimately decided with respect to late issue protection is that this time to prohibit them within five hundred feet of those waterways that are already identified and are in fifteen hours.
The current standard gives three hundred foot for the residential construction, you get that?
Three hundred foot setback?
Yeah.
Five hundred. No, they wouldn't be allowed in natural rivers, um, you can make the street protection mess, but they'd have to honor, um, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me back up a little bit. Five hundred feet within the identified U S G S waterways is where that late issue protection zone district is located. The setback, when I'm starting this, or, you know, hopefully fusion and we're full here, but the minimum setback is forty feet from the ordinary high water. Okay, so someone wants to build a new home, money shows them out way, all structures have to maintain these forty feet. There are some rare exceptions to that, but generally, it's good access at that.
Yeah, and the rivers, these would be flood, like.
The natural rivers is two hundred feet on a primary, and then we tributary a hundred fifty, that's that. But that, that doesn't, uh, that's not relevant to this ordinance, because it does not permit tiny, like, heavy development, see, and actually, we see. Yes. The chairman may be open, if we, many, probably, he's already planned it, makes a judgment, but all of his force.
Thank you, you use this word. Any further discussing questions? Adam Burton.
Mr. Markel.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Farnum.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah.
Mr. Beamen.
Yeah.
Mr. Stansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Osgood.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
You too.
Good work, pass that back to the planning commission.
Oh, Billy, maybe I can get it off.
We're down to twelve B, fair contract agreement, G N L chainsaw, free under this, one hundred and three minutes.
He has the ball, he can buy it, I have my choice, I agree, you all, which can, uh, yeah.
If you could.
I would prefer to be one and two together, but fully, uh, to produce yourself, if there's an extra condition on the, on the list.
One and two together, but?
One and two in the building, you know.
You should share on the, uh, nation.
I'll afford it.
So it's a territory, who want to pay, you, you, you.
Mr. Holland.
Yes.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Philamine.
Yeah.
Mr. Osgood.
Yes.
Mr. Whitefield.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Stansfield.
Yes.
So the public, uh, the figure is fair contract, actually, it's coming, it's there, which may have to have been, you know.
Well, I've got to know the flip, I have concerns about the legal status of, of the company, they have, they're affecting the contractors. And say, the, 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 you want to have, were approved that subject, in my mind, or how full of, all, 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 the proper status. And right now, there's no record, they don't mind, and being a part of a mission, so the mission.
So, about this liability.
So, how is the word represented, and I'm, I'm sure that the thing, the, 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 the.
It's going to be okay, Phil, will you, 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 I said, I, I.
No, no, so it's a, you know, we.
These sites, yeah, you sent, well, so, to find this, really, you know, contract here. How provision maybe they are, if you try to just stay here to, 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 to. Mr. Chairman, I, I know you think nation, uh, can be, the quality, we're going to come in our chance. Obviously, the, 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 what is, and for, yeah.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Farnum.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Stansfield.
Yeah.
Mr. Whitefield.
Yeah.
Thank you, boy, that's something, certainly, indeed, a plea. Down to C eighty-nine fifty-four, Torque Technology Multi-Bridges, you hear it, uh, what, right now?
Not a nicey person, but basically, you make a software that you use, that talks to a server, and you listen, and you print it out. Which is fun, maybe, the same guy. But, um, this report uses this one, I, you should have been, since, that, you have a year, yearly agreement, and, um, Joey Grapp has, um, done some research, and getting, and the multi-year rating, so that you can, you can pay overall less, um, because it'll keep increasing the price, you know, a lot. So the request is to, or, the Torque Technology, for, um, five-year period, other contributors sign, and operate the money, sure, to prepare the units, and so, and so, and so. And he didn't know that he did this, all of them, you did, that they were making, the news, and the financing was, you know, the, the. Part, uh, feared by us, um, that we can just pull back out of the green, and keep the, 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 so if something will happen, that you don't have any, you can go out.
Why is he bored? So, uh, hey, chairman, I'll make the motion, they were completely divorced, and all of this, you know, pretty. It's a lot of choice, that, that, one piece, word. That would test.
Mr. Stansfield.
Yeah.
Mr. Manning.
Yeah.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes, I like him, great.
Mr. Whitefield.
Yes.
Mr. Osgood.
Yes.
Mr. Farnum.
Yes.
Mr. Wayne.
Yes.
Thank you, boy, this carries seven and all. We're down to D, in addition, if you have any summary, any, one for each case.
If you got a request from, uh, on something, I got a sign, also, to, um, at our last meeting, you can cover some of, um, time, um, the, uh, and I can see, we, 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 um, they will get to, to, upon me, that they provide us. Um, so the recommendation is to perfect twenty twenty five summer loss, we can have opportunity of the office to find a sample, put in the, the. After that, sure, put any sign and advise finance director that could have any assets anybody.
Word. As of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adam, pardon.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Fama.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Ozden.
Yes.
Mr. Newman.
Yeah.
Mr. Stansfield.
Yes.
Thank you, that's what it's good. Word matters for discretion. Anything about the manners that we really young discuss, I, I'm public.
Well, that's the. I, I, sure, I, I think, you be honest. If you need, you are. Efforts to make sure all of our staff. Your administration's willing to. Stand in vice, and helping to. It's free, it's free. Any of the commissioners, the administration. I don't know how, without doing that, but. You can need your U R efforts to make sure our employees know that they're, they're. Come to us with any. Sure, this, but the, the, the resources. We're in some kind of.
Guide.
Guide, so how the, how we U R efforts can, if you're ever even feel. Safe. And law.
Good point, thank you. You can be. Meanwhile, over there. We're down to citizens comments, anything?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see now.
If I might, I introduce Michael Biwa. He's been a social attorney with Catherine Gwata. And so when those times that Catherine can't make a meeting, Michael may be here, Michael, he was from Harvey Springs, welcome, in more days every time. So he's got a local connection, I'll let Catherine continue.
Can you help me say, you know? I, I think you, I think it's, it's our best time, I think, to, to, well, we are taking for Brian Ram. To Peter Wemley and Savvy Taylor, Brian is working with us, Tuesday, three first, we can envision us. And I can look table this beginning set, so. Like, will be, it's my, I have still, I'm gonna build one, making with you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Citizens comments.
I bet. You have, yes, oh, township. Um, I want to thank everybody, um, I know it's been a difficult few weeks here, um. As county commissioners, I want to remind you that you have been entrusted with responsibility. Of ensuring ethical governance in a safe, professional workplace for all staff. Leadership decisions impact not only internal operations, but also public trust in administration. I know there's been growing concerns regarding the election of this position, given documented instances of bullying within our previous administrations. Employees deserve a workplace free from intimidation and allowing known pattern of mistreatment and continuing undercuts of integrity. I want to also take a moment to acknowledge and commend those of you who have, who have come forward to share experiences. Have given their advice, their input, speaking up about workplace bullying takes an immense courage. And their voice is crucial for fostering respectful and professional environment. I have no doubt that under our current leadership with Sheriff Ross and under Sheriff Kennedy. That um will do just that, I feel that um. This transition, we have the opportunity to restore confidence, reinforce ethical leadership, and create a workplace. Where respect and accountability are a combination. Their leadership will set the tone for more inclusive, transparent, and respectful workplace. Change is the most effective when we all play a role in shaping one. I encourage you to have open communication, collaboration, and a shared commitment to making this administration successful for all employees and our entire draft. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. And thank you for your service. Anyone else? Your name, sir?
Uh. Any member, any? Nope. Uh Louis Malus, nine time deputy board member. Uh. I, this was given as a. Imagine about the coverage of a new miracle that came out that. State of Missouri. Uh, this, the. Uh, sue, so, so thought was suing the, the Chinese government. For the uh coronavirus pandemic. And they secured a twenty four billion dollar grant, and it's the Chinese government, uh, and all this, the subsidiary, very. Uh, so what I am, I have asked, uh, uh, and a few other state lawmakers. To uh file a similar suit against the Chinese government. You should secure. A government that would entail. Uh. Securing a, uh, at least a million dollars for every migrant citizen in the state. Uh, whatever likes to have the county do is piggyback on any efforts. That uh the lawmakers are doing. And secure goodness for the county of the voiding. To uh compensate us, the citizens of. The uh town which avoiding for the three years of lost livelihoods.
Hey.
Lost freedoms. Uh, myself, uh, uh, to be, uh, be affected by that kind of. Um, I think it's duty upon our Chinese governments to. Uh. Ensure that maybe, uh, gets. Uh, duly compensated from the Chinese government. And the Wuhan labs for that, organs of that, in them. Uh, other than that, um. I do also want the uh, uh. Make the second, uh, third, uh, pleading call. For a resolution by the county to support that Android. And you need, when you need. Uh. That which comes through this county, the street, street rings. Long going, twenty three corridor, which avoiding the Metmont City. Do you have one going through Indian River? Uh, the warning, and uh, I'm sure that tree into the, can I see that way? And the third is on through Indian United Avenue, through the west side of the state from there, there's territory, cattle lot. Big grasses, and, and the South Beach, Alhambas, Hulke. Uh. This way then, you can have a better transportation network than what we have right now with Indian Grove, Bucklands. Uh, and. Were there, for national connections. That would be some pressure for economic development. Then, for our tourism, good natured, then, for our communities. Um. This would be the termination of three lines, so I think that should be the. Uh, send a strong message to Android, through the, through. Our state federal lawmakers that supported them in serious about ensuring their transportation network is. Connected to the national network. And uh, our current service, we have now, is on Saturday. So other than that, uh, that's could be it, and. We probably just need, I mean, we need a couple of those.
Fred, I hope you stay safe.
Well, since leadership, I can, I don't, I don't. Um. In regards to the current appointment that you guys have done, I think I did your homework, and you go with the quarter, you probably stress. That you thought. Um, I have noticed, especially since my husband ran the chair up, um, and been involved for, for the last five years. Nobody pulls skeletons out of the closet and airs them out and shows them somebody's favor. And I think that's underhanded, and we should not be done, if there are skeletons, bring them out before us. And get it out, you get it out. In regards to the tiny homes and the ordinance. I view, especially the law council, should take, you know, efficiency apartments, I think, over two fifty, three hundred and five. And they want to make tiny homes for fifty, somebody's got to go against that, and if somebody, it'll be a smaller home, but you can't have that in your community, so you need to just get that. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, always. Thank you. Anyone else? Word member, Colin.
It's kind of. So I just want to say thanks to all the commissioners and do the research, and. I just hope you do the best job out there, because they do it for how many years, has it done, shit. So I can, uh, thank, I mean. This statement that we read, with certainly, I felt. The, or is it, I think, is. Quite what I say, and I'm all. You know, it's, I can be, I can be private. Um. I guess I would like to have the worst story, this sample of the decision, and drop. It's, it's. I think words can move in the whole set, and it's about engines, I think. We can, we can, we can.